I'd like to call this March 28th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagnostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Dachek?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
All present.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. And tonight, we will have the opportunity to approve several grants thanks to GPD Group and the Strongsville Education Foundation that will contribute to our classrooms and that supports our strategic priority of transforming teaching and learning. Next is OSBA Student Achievement.
We would like Mrs. Boytum to come up. We'll start with the middle school because we have a few schools kind of running together tonight.
Good evening. I'm here because we are celebrating one of our sort of our staff members from the middle school, Mrs. Donna Schneider. I'm going to have her come on up. Donna is one of our monitors at the middle school and we were presented with the opportunity to celebrate one of our staff members for going the extra mile. And there's so many wonderful things that I could say about Donna and her contributions to our school. So she has served as a cafeteria monitor for many years and naturally she takes a wonderful leadership role among her colleagues, but she also takes much time to become, develop positive relationships with the students and ensure their safety and their comfort in our cafeteria. But alongside of that, she has taken much initiative to go into our offices and to learn the roles of our staff members, our clerks, and she always steps in and she's always trying to help. How can I help you? How can I learn this role if somebody's ill or sick? She steps in and she's able to take on the task and just she's just a wonderful team player and we're so grateful for her in our building and people like her. And we really could not function without her. So thank you for all that you do and for going the little extra mile outside of your everyday responsibilities.
I just feel that that's what I'm supposed to do. I'm there to work and I love working
Next on our list is high school. Bill, you're up.
What is that? Geez.
All right.
Okay?
We played basketball with the high school staff at 5:30 this morning. Everything hurts. All right, so I have two. I'm going to start with our teacher. I'm going to ask Ms. Jenna Namick to come on up. All right. So Jenna is our department chair in our Career Tech Services, which by itself, she's amazing. But I really want to focus on the work she's done in DECA. So those of you who know DECA, and I'm going to let you explain what DECA is because I will not do a good job as you will explaining it. But as a principal, I get to go down every year to Columbus. Laura, you got to go a few years ago. It was a really good time. Students are competing at a state level. You see when they get very little time and the next day they get very little sleep. They're disheveled. They have to go in and compete against the entire state. And to give you an idea how good our DECA program is, and it is probably one of the top two or three in the entire state, 55 of our students went to the DECA state championships. Thirty-three, thirty-three? Thirty, yeah, 33 of them made it to what we would call the state finals. We are sending next, in about a month, we are sending 18 students to the national competition in Anaheim, California.
You said there were 3,000 in Ohio.
Correct.
That made it up there.
To, yeah, that go to the state meet, yeah.
3,000 were in state.
So we, we are going to be very well represented to the point where I think she's got to raise some money to travel. I want to talk about the extra mile because that's the piece where Jenna comes in. You know, Jenna took over for Jessica Frenchak, who all of you know Jessica. She was an amazing DECA advisor. She's an amazing employee. The program didn't lose a beat. As a matter of fact, if Jessica's here, might have gotten a little better in terms of the amount of kids. The two of them worked together. Jenna is, she is truly relentless. You will not find an employee in Strongsville City Schools that works harder, never complains, and leads others. She's a leader in my building. In spite of DECA, I would have nominated her for this award. But she is truly, truly, truly someone in our district that goes the extra mile and sometimes it's two or three miles. So I think she's going to tell you more about DECA though.
So for those of you who don't know, DECA is a marketing program and the students, when they go to compete, they are presented with some sort of marketing scenario that they have to figure out how to problem solve and overcome. And what I love about what I do is the fact that we call it like an academic sport. We learn in the classroom and then we get to actually go do something with it, which really creates that deeper learning experience for students. So I'm very fortunate to do what I do and I'm very proud of all of my kids who I think you'll get to hear about one of the awesome ones shortly. So thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
All right. For my student, and we're going to stick a little bit with the DECA theme for this young man, Param Oswal, come on up. So when, yes, when these two, when these two ladies asked me to pick a student, it's really hard sometimes to pick. We have almost 2,000 students and we have a lot of students that do a lot of really great things. So I kind of looked at who could I pick that's accumulated so many great things that just has earned it over the course of time. And immediately, because as Haley, when they met him in class, we pulled him out of AP French, I believe, this young man smiles 24 hours a day. I've never seen him not smile in the four years that I've known him. Let me tell you a little bit about Param. First off, he's cumulative, he's a senior with a GPA of 4.339. He's a four-year varsity tennis player, two years as the captain. He's the National Honor Society Vice President. He's the Interact Club President. He's a DECA two-time national qualifier. Him and Michael Rose have qualified for nationals two years in a row. This year, they were state champions. He's on Dr. Riba's Student Advisory Council and he's a leader in the My Principals Leadership Group and he's also in Robotics Club. There is a list of things he hasn't done that's not much longer than that list. So when I looked at, we talked about a young man that has just left an imprint and will be missed when he leaves because he's done so many amazing things. And the truth is, in the middle of sometimes what is a crazy days being a high school principal, I do seek this young man out because he truly smiles 24 hours a day. One of the most positive people I've ever met. So Par, I'll, you say a few words. Do you want to say something, Param? I've never known Param to, oh, that, I left it out. Param was the winner of the Rotary, was it Rotary? Rotary Speech Competition. So he won some money with that. So I'm sure he wants to say something.
And he's incredibly modest. We've liked it.
I don't know. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I mean, I just sort of try to stay busy, stay out of the house. My parents hate it, but I love it. You know, just try to keep myself busy, whether it's like doing actual schoolwork or sports or clubs or whatever. I don't like just like sitting around and not doing anything. So just trying to get involved.
How was your plan for the year?
I'm studying finance at OSU next year. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The one thing that stuck out is that he's incredibly humble and modest. When we were asking him about his grades, he's like, well, I only have a 4.339. Like, it's nothing to brag about. I'm like, okay. He was incredibly modest about everything that he did. It was, it was awesome. And last but certainly not least, we would like to invite Mr. Gurka up here. This was an extra mile award that Sharon and I created after what we named the plague of 2024 when SRRAR was hit with illness, to say the least. So we decided that we thought that the staff at SRRAR did an amazing job of handling things with a smile on their faces, showing up to work when they could have very easily said, you know what, I'm not going to risk getting sick today, and helping everybody get through the experience. So, Gurka.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of everybody at SRRAR. Thank you for recognizing us. To paraphrase Martin Luther King Jr., "The ultimate measure of a person is not where they stand in times of comfort, but where they stand in times of challenge." And to put it mildly, Thursday, January 18th was a time of challenge for the staff at SRRAR Elementary School. Unfortunately or fortunately, I was not at school that day because I was one of the people who got hit with the SRRAR plague. But the staff did a wonderful job. I've heard it described as it was like watching The Exorcist at the school. The staff really, really rose to the occasion and the six people that were recognizing us tonight were really in the middle of it and went above and beyond to keep SRRAR running. And it's nice to say nice things about these wonderful people and they are a true representation of everybody at SRRAR. So here with us tonight, we have our head custodian, Ms. Donna. Come on up. We have our, our office secretary, Lynn Gorey. Our office aide, Paula Gatos. And our nurse, who everybody knows as Nurse Carol. Unable to, unable to be here tonight because they are, they are working, our night custodians, Katie and Miranda. These folks, from the, from the stories I've heard and everything, because again, I wasn't there, they jumped in, the walkie-talkie was going all day saying, Ms. Donna, we need a bucket. Ms. Donna, we need a garbage can. Ms. Donna, here. They, the office staff just jumped in, put kids where they needed to put kids to keep it going. They actually said it was good I wasn't there because they used my office as a spare clinic and, and put, right, put kids in there. So, so we really appreciate everything that they do, not just on that day, but everything they do on a daily basis to keep SRRAR running. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Student Services Director Andy Trujillo, who was sent over by Dr. Riba to, to help manage the chaos. So, so thank you, Andy, for your help there too. So, yeah. So thank you very much.
And we'd like to also recognize Mr. Gurka with an extra mile award because in his first days of filling in that role at SRRAR, he had to deal with what we will call the plague of 2024 with The Exorcist. So thank you so much for staying past that, like that happened. So they're the unsung heroes of the experience too when Dr. Riba sent other people on his behalf to deal with it. They were in trenches.
Greg? Greg? I'm making a mistake. I know, I know.
Sorry you got it.
Thanks again. You're welcome. Thank you so much.
All right. This is one of my favorite things to do. So in, to honor the students, the student achievement at Strongsville High School, there are so many students that achieve at, just as you heard, Param, Param has 4.339 GPA, which this year doesn't even, I mean, not offense to Param, but it's not, not even our top 5%. That's how difficult it is. So one of the things I'd like to talk about is students that achieve at, at very high levels. So the National Merit Scholarship Corporation every year has levels of National Merit Honored Students. There's commended, semifinalists, and finalists. And before I call up the commended students, I want to tell you exactly what you have to do to become one of those. So of the 1.5 million students who take the PSAT or SAT in America, in order to be commended, you have to basically be in the top 34,000. And what that means is you have to be in the top 2% for testing in the country. These students get letters of commendation across the country because they are in such rare company. So I'm going to call up our commended students and have them stand up here. Ally Carey.
Nathan's at school. I asked, I asked him to skip.
He's studying.
For some reason, that didn't work.
I have to get my glasses for this next name. Nehal Jeta-Gokhar. This is why they don't let me read names at commencement. Ayush Kesri. I told Kaye I was going to tell stories because I knew she was, since she's a first grader, but I won't do that. So these students were, are all honored by nationally as being commended students. So round of applause.
Yes, congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You look just like your dad.
Congratulations.
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 Okay, and I have, so from the commended students, we then have semifinalists, but we don't, we only have finalists. So I'm going to skip from semifinalist to finalist. Then the finalist category, in order to make that, you have to be basically in the top roughly 14 to 16,000. There's actually a calculator, there's a formula. I'm not going to explain the formula because I don't really understand it. But you have to be basically in the top 14,000 to 15,000 people in the country, which puts you at the top eighth, 0.8 percentile in the nation for testing. And our finalists, we have two finalists, And Chloe Mans. Team just walked up and shook their hands. I was down for the filming. We're not supposed to tell you the results, but I'm going to tell you to watch on April 27th because it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think maybe we can get one of the finalists or one of the commended to explain the formula to Mr. Wengler.
I don't know what you could ask.
But I just want, on behalf of the board, I just want to let everyone know how proud we are of all of these students. And we're proud of their parents for the guidance and the, the work they do in allowing us to have their children in our schools so that we can be examples for other young people. And what I like about any of these recognitions is that other students, younger students, are going to see what great things our students are accomplishing and know that they too can accomplish great things. So thank you for those examples and I appreciate it. One more final round of applause. You don't get to be this bright and you don't get to do so well academically by staying at really boring board meetings. So if anybody needs to escape to do homework or anything else profitable, thank you very much.
One person's very happy. Bye-bye.
I will try not to.
Hey, Richard. Richard, refresh your agenda. I changed some action items to consign in vice.
I know. I just thought I'd ask again.
We do have one more recognition and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Pelco.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I do want to announce pending your approval this evening under my section, our new principal of SRRAR Elementary, and that is Mrs. Emily Young. So I'm going to ask Emily to come up to the podium here. And she's here with her family, her two daughters and her husband. So prior to the interview process, I sent out a survey to the entire SRRAR staff asking what they would like to see in a new principal for SRRAR Elementary, just getting their feedback. And Emily checks all of those boxes. So Emily comes to us most recently from Brunswick, where she serves as a assistant principal, but also oversees the preschool there. She is highly skilled in special education, very well-versed in all of the law, the nuances, and most importantly, knows how to be an advocate for our students. And I think that is a huge bonus that we're getting with Emily. She has also served as, as a teacher. She's very familiar with elementary curriculum, especially the kindergarten level. You've had experience there. She's had various roles in her career, but she, again, just throughout the interview process, just continued to impress us with her skills and her abilities. And again, most of all, her ability to build relationships with people and hopefully will set SRRAR on, into the future on a wonderful path. So Emily, I'll let's turn it over to you and let you share a few words.
Okay. I am very thankful to be here and I'm really excited to get started. So thank you for the opportunity. I am here with my husband, Steven, and our two daughters, McKenna and Nia. They're in kindergarten and second grade. But I'm just really excited to see even staff here tonight. I think that's great. And I've heard really great things about the building and so I'm ready to go.
Congratulations, Emily. We're just thrilled to have you.
Welcome. We're going to be very proud of you.
So on behalf of the board, we want to welcome Emily. We're looking forward to great things. And it was very nice of you to bring your family. Looking at McKenna and Nia, I know that they will keep you on the right track. And if you're ever wondering, any questions of how your students are reacting, you can always look to them for advice. So thank you very much and welcome aboard. Next on our agenda is public comment. I do not have any slips for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board anyways? Next is treasurer's, oh no, next is approval of minutes. That is part of our consent calendar. The minutes are for the March 14th, 2024 work session. Next on our agenda is treasurer's report. Mr. Onagnostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first being the financial report for the month ended February 29th, 2024. The financial status report is attached to the agenda as well as supplemental report. And I'll go over the supplemental report. How we're trending through February. Current year-to-date revenue collections indicate 695,000 favorable compared to the five, to the November five-year forecast. Current expenditures compare about 647,000 favorable to the five-year forecast. And the net two of those would impact cat or cash by 1.3 favorably, 1.3 million. Overall, if, if the projection goes through for the rest of the year, we would finish with a cash balance at June 30th of 49.9 million, which would add about 3.8 operating surplus for the end of the year with revenues being over expenditures. In comparison, revenues through Feb, or February revenues in comparison of this year can
In comparison, revenues through Feb- or February revenues in comparison of this year compared to last year, actual revenues were down by 6 million last, or this year compared to last year, and that's in the property tax collections. And what that basically is, is timing. The county had pushed back the deadline to, the, the payment deadline for the taxes about a week, week and a half, which overlapped with the advances. So the February advance was $6 million less compared to years past. Our March settlement, we just received that last week, we got what we were supposed to receive, and it was actually about $600,000 more than the forecast. So overall, all those $6 million down here, or less for February, it was just more of a timing, timing issue.
So we can expect March to show a, a-
An increase.
Six, six million dollar or so increase.
And then that has the same impact with the year-to-date through February compared to last February. Overall, revenues are $5 million less, which is 6.2 of that is property taxes. And then state revenue is about 300, $400,000 higher, which is the additional state funding formula through the new biennium budget, and other revenue is higher due to interest income primarily. And then how it's comparing to the forecast, we're comparing to the forecast favorably about 695,000, and the breakdown is, as I mentioned, we got the tax settlement for revenues, we're about $600,000 higher. Investment income is about $260,000 higher. State aid is about $187,000 less, and then all other revenues are about $50,000 more. And then that total variance of 695,000 is equal to about 0.78% of the forecast annual revenue difference. Moving on to expenditures, expenditures for the month of February, this February compared to last February are $628,000 higher. That's primarily due to salaries and benefits of $400,000 and purchase services of $180,000. Actual expenditures year-to-date through February comparison to last February are about $2.7 million higher. Salaries and benefits make up about $2.9 million of that difference. Purchase services about $100,000 more, while other expenses are about $278,000 less, and those have to do with timing, as we'll see in the agenda later on. There's about $650,000 worth of tech items that are going to be approved, and then also in the upcoming agendas, we'll see tech, textbooks adoption, which is out of the other expenses as well. And then how it's comparing to the five-year forecast, we're about $647,000 less in comparison to the forecast, and that's in salaries and benefits. That's our biggest expense, and we have seen some movement within personnel throughout the year with people leaving, going on and leave, change in benefits, so that all has an impact on our yearly expenditures. And the total variance of 647,000 equates to about 0.8% of the forecast amount. So we'll continue to monitor. There's still more separations and people leaving, so as, we might have more savings as the year goes on through those items as well. So continue to monitor and update each month, and then in May, we do another five-year forecast. So any questions on the February report? Hearing none. Moving on to grant approval. Mr. Micco, you touched on these earlier. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the following grants be approved for fiscal year '24. There's two GPD grants. First one is for the curriculum department for Wilson Reading, fourth grade addition, MI K to 12 of 4,500. The next item is for the technology department, 3D printers and related materials for $2,800. Then the following two items are Strongsville Education Foundation grants. There's a district touch math grant from the Bessie Kinster Endowment Grant through the SEF of $27,681,000, and that, I believe, is a five-year program for this touch math grant, or three, three-year. Aaron, is it three-year? Three-year, I'm sorry. A three-year subscription to the, to that program. And then the last item is Surar Elementary gym class tablet of $240. Any questions on grants? Item three, student activity program budget revision. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the following student activity program budget revision for fiscal year '24 be approved. It is for the cheerleading student activity bu- program from $46,760 to $56,760, or $10,000 increase, and that increase is primarily due to the way that the vendor, further additional items that the cheerleaders are going to purchase, normally they would pay the direct, the vendor directly. They change vendors, and this year, the program's going to collect the money and make one order through the school. Item four, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the amended permanent appropriations for fiscal year be approved. The changes that we had were for the, the SEF and the GPD grant and Fund 019, our termination benefits fund, and an increase of $7,069 of appropriation due to additional separations. The student activity, district, district managed student activity account, $10,000 increase for the cheer program. And then Title III, it was reallocation in federal funds, so a reduction of $5,900. Item five, House Bill 9 Ohio Public Records Training. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the Board of Education accepts the certified hours for House Bill 9 Ohio Public Records Training. This training is in compliance with all of Ohio Record Statues and Board of Education requirements. Let the treasurer, George Onagnostu, myself, be the designee on behalf of the Board of Education for Public Records Training. This public records training was held virtually on Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 12:15 PM, and presented by the Office of Dave Yost, Ohio Attorney General. And the last item, district credit card limits. Be it resolved upon the recommendation that the treasurer per Board Policy 6423, the annual credit card limits per cardholder and where account be approved as listed in the exhibit. This is an annual item that we usually put on the organizational meeting. It was on the organizational meeting. We're making a couple changes to it. The primary change is, as Ms. Namick presented earlier about the DECA program, as annually they've been going to nationals, they need a card as they go for their expenses, and normally they take a purchasing card, but with how they've been using it this year, they need one card with their name on it. So what we decided to do was get an individual card for Jenna and Jessica. That way they could have it for their needs, and since it's an annual item, they're going to be going to nationals and states every year, so it made sense. And then we made an addition, we made a change to a middle school card from taking it off a teacher's name to the FCS program. So those were the changes.
Any questions for George? So I do want to highlight, you know, simple, small things like district credit card limits, we take seriously. We adjust it as necessary because we know we're stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep that money safe and accounted for. So thank you, George. If there are no other questions for George, next on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Raiba, you have the chair.
I'll do my best here to impersonate him. And I'm going to turn it over to Steve Brechner, our operations manager, for his report under business services.
Good evening, everyone. There's a few items for your consideration under the business services section of the report. The first one is a purchase for the Strongsville High School HVAC project be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Let the Board of Education accept a proposal from Gardner for the 400-ton multi-stack chiller replacement project at Strongsville High School, not to exceed $626,144. Gardner is a preferred partner of the Ohio Schools Council in this consortium pricing, and this is going to be purchased out of the permanent improvement fund.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Thank you for the dramatic pause.
So this does, because of the dollar amount, this does need separate action. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education accepts the proposal from Gardner for the 400-ton multi-stack chiller replacement at Strongsville High School, not to exceed $626,144. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? Steve, what's a chiller?
So what this is, is an HVAC unit designed to heat and cool, more specifically, cool the area of the high school, some 600 classrooms over by the little theater. With the improvements that we made during the renovation, we knew that this unit was oversized, but it was working well when the renovation was done, so was determined not to replace it. However, that narrative has changed, has changed. The condenser is broken inside of it. There's four condensers in the unit, each one costs between $20,000 to $25,000 to replace. When you take that into consideration with the maintenance on this type of HVAC unit is substantially more than an air-cooled unit. I called Gardner, who, like I said, is a preferred partner of OSC, and we came up with a plan to make this unit be more in line with the other units that are in the district. The maintenance on it is less, the tonnage on it is less, the, the efficiency, the, the electrical efficiency on it is better. So all around, it's a good purchase. Because we have such a good relationship with Gardner, they will do the preventive maintenance on this current water chiller, multi-stack chiller, until the new one comes in as part of this project. That will save us between $15,000 to $20,000 is the annual cost for that. And then also, they will just put the new unit into the program. I already have all the other chill, air-cooled chillers in, at no additional charge as well. So it's a very good deal for us, very good deal for them, and we've worked with them in the past for a lot of our HVAC, so it's highly recommended that we do this to save. It's, it's upfront cost, of course, is more, but over time, the maintenance on that unit that's there now, that's 20 years old, 15 to 20 years old, it, the operational cost is better to get this new one and have this in place than to keep nursing along the old one, especially as it keeps breaking down.
I just want to clarify, you said 600 classrooms, and you meant the 600-
The 600, sorry. Room 600, sorry.
Room 600 section of the high school, not 600 classrooms. Which, cooling 600 classrooms with one chiller would be pretty cool.
It's a very effective chiller.
I do want to highlight that, you know, this is part of our program to maintain our buildings, so money well spent, better to maintain. One of our mantras is always to keep our buildings warm, safe, and dry, and in parentheses, cool, is part of that program. So thank you very much for all the work you've done on it.
Mr. Micco? I will add, with the permanent improvement fund, the cash is there for it, but the next, that, the April regular session, I'll have an appropriation adjustment to increase the budget to utilize the cash that's there for this. Just wanted to make the board aware.
Very good. Any other questions? George, please take the role.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Micco?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
The second item for tonight is the Strongsville Middle School Track Resurfacing Project. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education accepts a proposal from Field Turf USA Incorporated to apply resurfacing slash structural spray on the middle school track, the amount not to exceed $142,586. This is also consortium pricing, and it will be taken out of the permanent improvement fund.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? Tell us what we're doing.
So what we're doing is maintaining the track that is seeing some wear and tear. It is now seven years old, and they're recommending every five years to do this, so we're a little behind on it, but with this respraying, we will be able to extend the life of the track. You know, that versus just patching and repatching and replacing a lot sooner, which is about four times the amount and ever increasing. So this is something that's needed to maintain that track surface and have it survive some of the harsh snows of March, so.
So, and if we can just highlight, consortium pricing means that we're getting the best pricing without having to go through the trouble of doing the bids ourselves.
Going out for bid. So this is through the OSC, the AEPA Consortium, I believe, that's, somebody can fact-check me if they need, but it's on, it's on the quote as well. It's a partner with a more known name as Vasco. We do a lot of our work with them. So Field Turf USA is a, is a large group, and Vasco's one of their contractors, and we're able to utilize our relationship with the OSC and their consortium, where they go out for bid and do state minimum pricing is, is a more common vernacular. They do all of that for us, so we don't have to go out and do that on our own, so we appreciate that relationship, and, and that's where this project pricing and the, and the good pricing that we get comes from.
Any other questions? George, take the role.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Micco?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right, the next item, the third one, is to rescind the purchase of two 72-passenger conventional school bus chassis and bodies. Be resolved from the recommendation of the superintendent, that the following previously approved item be rescinded, and this is from the January 11th, 2024 agenda, where the Board approved the purchase of two 72-passenger conventional school buses and school bus chassis and bodies, and then the funding is to be returned from the permanent improvement fund from this purchase.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? Why are we?
So, so what is hap-
This is a pattern.
What happened in this is the previously mentioned Ohio Schools Council will go out on our behalf and bid for buses, and the buying power, because that's a Northeast Ohio association, they will bid as many buses as, as their hundreds of schools are asking them to bid. So what happened is that in that January 11th board meeting, I proposed one of the companies called Hill International. They are a dealer of the international buses that we wish to purchase. However, there was a, a bit of a clerical error. International light, gives people licenses to sell their product, but they have to stay in their, their area. Unbeknownst to us, unbeknownst to Ohio Schools Council, we were buying from a different region. So we need to rescind that purchase, and then in a very short order, in the very near future, we are then going to use, utilize that same money at the same price with our local dealer that's in our area, Rush, and they price matched what we had from Hill. So that, that is the whole story. In the future, I, now, and, and it was just a mistake at the, because it was on the bid document, now I know who our dealer is whenever we go to buy international buses, so this will be resolved, but that's the reason why we need to rescind this purchase.
And to be clear, there's no financial impact.
Correct.
Any other questions? George, take the role.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Micco?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
So as a complete shock, I am putting forward a bus bid award. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the bus bids be accepted for two 72-passenger conventional school bus chassis and bodies, as received by the school bus cooperative purchasing program of the Ohio Schools Council, as listed in the exhibit. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the bids be accepted from Rush Bus Center Akron for two 72-passenger conventional school bus chassis and bodies. Funding shall be as follows. For those buses, it will be from the permanent improvement funds, not to exceed the aggregate principal amount of $264,052, and that's the same amount that we had purchased from Hill for these two buses. So no change in the amount whatsoever.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? To clarify, there is no financial impact. It's the same price.
That is correct. They priced match what we had before.
Are we going to get them?
Yes.
Any update on the previous?
We have two of the three in. I, I do not know when the third is going to be in. They, they have not cleared that yet. And that was from Myers.
That was from three years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Agnastu. I believe your section of the report is over, sir.
I say that just because that was part of the state bus grant that we've been waiting on for those buses. So hopefully that third bus comes by June, so we could not ask for another extension for the grant.
And to be clear, we're not the only ones having this problem.
That's correct, yeah.
This is a national problem with bus supply. Any other questions? Any other discussion? George, take the role.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right. The fifth item in the business services section is a purchase of mobile classrooms. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the awarded, the award, the awarded four-year lease agreement for six mobile classrooms. And that's six mobile classroom units. I'm sorry, that word needs to be added there. So a total of 12 classrooms, because it's two per unit. One to be at Chapman Elementary, one at Kinsner Elementary, two at Maraski Elementary, and two at Surar Elementary with William Scotsman Incorporated, not to exceed the total cost of $833,546.40. Funding to be from the general fund.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? We did have plenty of discussion at our previous meeting. We are busting at the seams is probably the best way to describe this. We are growing. We will continue to grow. We've had a number of enrollment studies in the past that all predict this growth. The last time I checked, they're within 50 students. They continue to be within 50 students. So barring dealing with this growth with a capital improvement campaign, with an elementary schools facility project, which we have planned, these are the short-term, the short-term ways we're going to address this growth. Any other questions or comments? George, take the role.
Ms., Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
And lastly, we have a gift to the district. Let's see, be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent, the following be approved. Ritesh Patel donated a baritone instrument valued at $700 to Whitney Elementary School. Thank you.
Before we let him escape, are there any other questions? Run. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Next with the curriculum report is our Director of Curriculum, Erin Green.
Good evening. I have four items tonight for your consideration. The first two will be overnight trips. Item one is an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Boys Varsity and Junior Varsity Lacrosse Teams. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Boys Varsity and Junior Varsity Lacrosse Teams to travel to Columbus, Ohio, April 12 through 13 of 2024 to participate in competition, transportation via school bus, lodging and meals paid by participating students, and the Strongsville Athletic Boosters. The second item is very similar. It's for an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Girls Varsity and Junior Varsity Lacrosse Teams. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted for this, these teams to travel to Worthington, Ohio, April 18 and 19 of 2024 to participate in a lacrosse tournament, transportation via school bus, lodging and meals paid by the students and the Strongsville Athletic Boosters. Item three and four will be revisions. Item three is a revision to a service agreement with PSI affiliates. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following revision be made. So the original was, the original was from October 26, 2023. And the revision is service agreement for St. Joseph and John Interparochial School with PSI affiliates. The new total allocation amount will be increased to $40,308.34. And then the, the second item of those two, again, a revision to the Agenda, October 26, 2023 Agenda. The service agreement for St. Albert the Great with PSI affiliates. New total allocation amount there would be $8,585.93.
And I will add, as the reasons for those revisions, when we get reallocations and Title I funding portion goes to the non-publics. So as we get our reallocations, they get reallocations as well. So we have to revise those contracts for any increased amounts that they receive. So that's why there's revisions. And I believe there'll be a couple more once we get the contracts for two other non-public schools.
Thank you.
And to be clear for the public, this isn't out of the general fund. This is out of Title I funds. It is one of the few funds that we are still stewards for, that the local school district acts as the federal government's agent to make sure that the money is spent properly. But it is not general fund money. It is not local property taxes that is paying for this. It's still taxes, though. And then Erin, I just wanted to come, or compliment GPD on the math program. And I'm looking forward to seeing the results.
Absolutely.
So this is my reminder that we're going to want to see the results one year, two year, and three years from now.
You got it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Erin. Next up, Andrew Trujillo with our report from Student Services.
Good evening, members of the board. I have two items for your consideration tonight. The first is Maxim Healthcare Services Addendum. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an addendum with Maxim Healthcare Services, who operates a healthcare staffing agency and employs licensed healthcare personnel to provide personal, to provide personnel to supplement nursing services, as shown in the exhibit. This is a revision from an Agenda item in August 3 of 2023. Questions about that? No? Okay. The next is just our extended school year program dates for students with disabilities. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent, the Board of Education approves the extended school year program for school age and preschool students with disabilities at Strongsville Middle School for the session listed below. Our dates will be June 17 through July 18. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Next is the report for Human Services. So several items for you tonight. Under one, we have the resignation of certificated staff, resignations for non-certificated staff, retirements for certificated staff, retirements for non-certificated staff. Five, appointment for an administrative staff. You met Emily earlier. Excited to have her begin with us. Six, appointments for certificated staff. Under seven, appointments for non-certificated staff. Eight, we have appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Nine, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contract. Ten, appointment for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract. Under eleven, appointment for certificated supplemental contract. Twelve, appointments for game workers. Changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Changes in status for non-certificated staff. Contract recommendations for non-certificated staff. We have medical leave for an administrative staff. Medical leaves for certificated staff. Medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Unpaid leaves for certificated staff. Unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff. Under 21, we have volunteer chaperones. Under 22, we have substitute rates for certificated staff. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that effective April 9, 2024 through May 24, 2024, the certificated daily substitute rate schedule be amended to the following percentage of the certificate, certificated salary schedule BA zero base pay per DM daily rate calculated using 178 student days per year and rounded to the nearest dollar. So that is from day one and beyond, they will receive 47% of BA zero base. 23, we have a memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted. And finally, under 24, we have an agreement related to the terms and conditions of employment. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of student, of the superintendent that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent and the treasurer to enter into an agreement impacting terms and conditions of employment, the terms of which have been reduced to writing and provided to the board. And that concludes my report.
The last item is an action item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? We all have been provided with the terms of the agreement. Mr. Agnastu, would you take the role?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Dave Bingley for the report on technology.
Well, good evening. It's that time of the year again where you see me a couple weeks in a row. So the first item I have today is for purchasing of student Chromebooks. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of Chromebooks and Google Chrome management licenses not to exceed $500,000 to be used to provide student Chromebooks and student replacement Chromebooks via the one-to-one self-insurance fund and for devices that are no longer operational. And my second item is for Phase Two of our PC refresh project. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves Phase Two of the Technology Department PC refresh project, replacing 192 outdated teacher slash staff PCs with updated Windows 11-ready teachers, staff PCs, compatible monitors, and required cables. Equipment to be purchased from Royal Business Equipment at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Any questions for Dave? So I will just clarify, the Chromebooks is both general fund and the self-insurance fund. I think you just said self-insurance fund.
Yeah, it's the 001 general fund for the, the general purchase. And then the replacement Chromebooks come from the self-insurance 023 fund.
And then I did have a chance to look at the quotes for both the Chromebooks and for the PCs. And based on my experience and my day job, they both seem very reasonable, and we got good pricing overall. So thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Steve.
Next on our agenda is Polaris Career Center report. Mrs. Bissell?
Laura's gonna, I'm actually gonna take a stab at it tonight.
Mrs. Housel, you're up.
Coming up on the end of my third month on the Polaris board, I've enjoyed and learned a lot, and it's going faster already. I can't believe it's been three months. But I wanted to start by letting everyone know that there is a second annual first responder career fair slash touch a truck event. It will be held April 13 from 10 to 3 p.m. There will be over 80 departments and agencies on hand from the U.S. Secret Service and the TSA to local police departments and military. There will be something for everyone. This event is open to the public, and it is free. And then we have a couple student spotlights. I wanted to start by talking about Ms. Natalie Arcellanian. She's a senior here in Strongsville. She's also a cosmetologist student, cosmetology student at Polaris. And she's the youngest student to complete the program, getting in all of her required hours. And she was able to pass the state boards before she graduates this May, which, that's phenomenal. She's the first student to do that. She's already working in a salon here in Middleburg Heights. And again, she will graduate with her class from Strongsville in May. And then next, we have a Polaris ambassador, Ally Walsh. She is in the EMT and fire program there. And I'm sorry, I took a picture of, because I wanted to share something that she put on hers. Her favorite thing about Polaris, the environment. It is a wonderful place to be, and she has never felt unwelcome walking through the doors. So that was great to read, because I concur to that. It's always a very welcoming every time I go there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Laura. It was a great report. I hope you get to do it a few more times. Next on our agenda is report on legislation. I think I'm going to have one of my best legislation reports I've ever delivered. The Ohio Legislature is on break following the March 19 primary election and is not expected to return to Columbus until the second week of April to resume committee and floor sessions. And that concludes my legislative report. Board liaison reports, city council. I can go ahead. I do have, we did have a city council meeting on March 18. And the one announcement I did want to share is April 1, there will be a meeting for rezoning, specifically the new zoning ordinance for the mall. So if anybody is interested in knowing about that or commenting for or against the rezoning, that is April 1, Monday. That is not a joke. That is not an April Fool's Day joke. It is April 1, Monday at 7 p.m. in council chambers. And that concludes city council. Strongsville Education Foundation?
The last meeting that I was at, just to give you an idea, because I'm always amazed at how much these people do for us. I commend them. The field trips for this year, they contributed $2,100. Rotary donated 1,000. Megan Serso and Erin Green had come to our last meeting and requested the Touch Math, which is a new program. It's for moderate to intensive children with disabilities. And it took these guys like a second to approve it at like $27,000-something dollars. So look for them. They mail out things, they ask for donations. They will have a casino night, which they're starting to plan already in November. I encourage everyone to support them. They don't get anything out of this, but our kids get a ton. So, and I think that's it. Oh, and scholarship applications are due by, actually, March 29, which is tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is PTA council. Sharon again.
And that's me. Our last PTA was March 7. We had Mr. Lou Marconi come, the principal at Kinsner. He listed, he was very informative, told us all like things on his list that he wants to improve and do at the school. Cameron talked at that time about selecting a new principal, which, at Surar, which we have done. They thanked all the Founder's Day volunteers. That night, I was there. That, that was a success. That was a success. Everyone liked how it turned out, and they didn't feel it was too long or too short. So that was great. They've already had their dance, which was March twenty-second. The Dare Program has seniors go to the eighth grade to help as role models, and Safety Town signups were March twenty-fifth for city residents, and volunteers can come from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I guess this is like huge, like kids are on waiting lists for this. So registration is April fifteenth, and then they have volunteer training for the kids, which is March, I mean, May fourth, May eleventh, and May thirtieth. Dare Day is May twenty-fourth. It's a raffle and pizza dare dance. The PTA is supplying all the drinks. That's May tenth for seventh and eighth grade, from six to nine at the rec, and May seventeenth for fifth and sixth, from six to nine at the rec. Tickets are fifteen dollars, and they definitely need help with chaperones, as always. So if anyone's interested, get ahold of the PTA, or, and they'll get you ahold of the representative for the dare. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Sharon. Next is our Board Committee Reports. First is Finance Committee.
George, what's the scoop?
We haven't had a meeting, and we'll see what our next steps are for renewal levy, and then we'll go from there regarding a finance meeting, as we think about our next steps.
And I'll have some comments about that during Board of Education Other. Policy Committee?
Similarly, it's about that time. So when Cameron gets back, I'm sure Haley and I will be getting a new packet to wait.
Very good. And Facilities Committee Report. Our next meeting is April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at six-thirty P.M. in this building. And do we have a report for Business Advisory Council?
Our meeting on April nineteenth has been canceled, and so we will resume in the fall.
Thank you very much. At this point in our agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type action consent, which constitutes the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member requests otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? So I do have one, if we can vote on the volunteers separately. So we will remove the volunteers from the consent calendar, and the rest of it will remain as the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So hang on, Mr., I'm going to change that to, just give me a second to change the volunteers to...
No rush.
To action.
Is it because of who's, because family?
Because I'm related to one of the volunteers.
If she meant it.
I should always look at me.
Just taking a second to find it.
What?
All right, so item J twenty-one is now a action item. So I've got to refresh this page. Sorry.
So we'll do the consent calendar first. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane, any discussion? Hearing none, please take the role.
All right, Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. We'll now do, what is the number, George?
J twenty-one.
We'll now take J twenty-one, the list of volunteers to be approved. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane, any discussion? Out of abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of anything, my wife is on that list of volunteers. I think she is a great volunteer. Any other comments? Please take the role.
Thanks.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Epstein?
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And thankfully, the motion still carries.
For the volunteer job.
Yes.
Volunteers.
Next on our agenda is Superintendent's Timely Information. Mrs. Pelco?
All right. So first thing I'd like to highlight is at Kinsner Elementary, our third and fourth graders had the opportunity to actually practice their golf skills with Mrs. Weir, who is one of our phenomenal P.E. teachers at the elementary level, and she made a connection with First T Cleveland. First T Cleveland is comprised of volunteers that come and visit and provide a two-day lesson in P.E. about the basics of golf. Not only do they teach about golf, but within that lesson, they are teaching a lot of our Model Mustang competencies. So they also connect collaboration, how we collaborate together, how you're resilient when you don't make your shot and you try again. So it was, it was fun. I got to go and actually see it in action, and the kids were, you know, just really excited to do something new and different, and they just loved the volunteers. They were connected with them instantly and talking with them, and it was just a very cool experience. So we're looking to see if this is something that we want to bring to the future to our elementary schools, just a lot of not only learning about golf, but skills that can benefit kids long-term. Next, I'd like to highlight our middle school students who participated in the annual Polaris Palooza Competition. So again, this event just brings lots of Polaris families together from all of the different schools and features various robotic contests, which provides students the opportunity to showcase their innovation and creativity, another part of our Model Mustang, and those skills that we want our students to develop. So middle school students took first place in both of the main competitions, Mad Grab and Dragster. So just thrilled to see all of those top finishers in both of those events, and just the smiles on their faces and the excitement in that competition. I know I've gone before, and it's just amazing to see what they can do. So congratulations to them. And then finally, under our high school, I'd like to highlight Mr. Hardaby, who teaches home maintenance and repair course at the high school, and really introduces students to the construction industry, including residential construction and general maintenance. Just wonderful skills that students are learning in his class about home electricity, how to wire outlets, which is just amazing. And it's just a project-based, hands-on course that gives students exposure to just short-term remodeling projects and that practice, and, for example, wall framing, drywall finishing, and painting, and what wonderful things as future homeowners to be able to do, and lots of money I'm sure they can save themselves by learning all of those things, so.
Jenny, I wanted to, if I could just share real quick, my twenty-four-year-old son took this class when he was at Strongsville High School, and he helped my dad today change out outlets in...
There you go.
... bedrooms.
There you go.
All for Mr. Hardaby.
That's amazing. See, there you go.
And no one was electrocuted.
Everybody's safe.
They turned the power off to the rooms.
Because, because they took the class.
And finally, just a few reminders as we conclude our week before break here. I just want to remind everybody that spring athletics have started, so excited to cheer on both middle school and high school, all of our athletes that are completing in baseball, softball, track and field, lacrosse, tennis, and volleyball. And I think that picture there is rain on a baseball field. So it's been up and down with baseball, and we're trying our best, but again, please visit StrongsvilleAthletics.org and follow SES Mustangs on social media for the most up-to-date schedule and try to get out to a game, maybe when the weather's better. That'd be great. And then lastly, today was our last day before spring break, so just want to wish everybody a great spring break. We are not in session tomorrow, March twenty-ninth, and that will go through Monday, April eighth, which is also the date of the solar eclipse. So just want to wish everybody a great break and time with family and friends.
Thank you, Mrs. Pelco. Next on our agenda is Board of Education Other. Do we have any Board of Education Others?
I had a couple. I just want to let everybody know that the Fire Department's Popular Fire Academy for Kids will return this summer. Registration starts April first, and no, that's not a joke. The academy will be held from June fifth to the sixth at Fire Station Four on Prospect Road from nine to three P.M. It is free, and it is for children ages ten to eleven who live here in Strongsville. And while you're marking, marking your calendars, it's never too early to talk about Homecoming Festival. That will be happening July twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. There are a lot of sponsorship opportunities. If you're interested, you can contact the Strongsville Chamber office.
Thank you, Laura. Any other Board of Education Others?
I have a few. It was, I honestly just forgot to give this one at our last meeting, but I wanted to give a shout-out to our own Dr. Raiba. But at the Mayor's State of the City Report a few weeks ago, Dr. Raiba received the Community Partner Award, and it is, it is given to someone, not necessarily who lives in the city, but someone who impacts the city, and it is a way to recognize commitment to the community's well-being and improving the quality of life for Strongsville residents. And Dr. Raiba was considered for the award in two thousand twenty-four, and a big part of the reason he received the award was all the work he has initiated to connect Strongsville students to the local business community, especially through the Business Advisory Committee. Through Dr. Raiba's efforts, Strongsville City School students have learned the skills and qualities employers seek through inter, through in-person interactions with business leaders. And so the mayor commended Dr. Raiba during his State of the City, and so we just wanted to extend our congratulations on that award, and it does, it does highlight the partnership we have, the school district has with the city, and how valuable it is for both of us. So congratulations to Dr. Raiba, and I'm sure he appreciates not being here while we give him those kudos. And then the next thing I did want to discuss was the recent election. As everyone knows, the renewal did not pass. I have, today I was able to go on to the Board of Elections website, and for the computer geeks in the room, they will, they may or may not appreciate this, but the Board of Elections released the spreadsheet with all, with some of the detail, not all of the detail. And so, being the data geek that I am, I downloaded it immediately, and none of the issues were in the spreadsheet. And so fortunately, I was able to call Mr. Lawler, who works at the Board of Elections for the county, and he, on my behalf, made some requests, and it turns out that the original version of the spreadsheet was Windows ninety-eight compatible, and so it stopped at sixty-four thousand, give or take, rows of data, and our issues were below that. So they had to request a new spreadsheet, and fortunately, they returned, or sent that new spreadsheet and emailed to me. Again, the levy was not renewed, we did not earn the support of the voters, so what we as a board will have to do is review those results, and then ultimately, we will have to go through the process of determining whether we put this renewal back on the ballot in November. Just some timelines for us to think about. If the board chooses to put something on the ballot in November, we have to have that filed with the County Board of Elections by Wednesday, August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and prior to doing that, we have to, we as a board have to vote on two resolutions. The first resolution would tell the county, we want to potentially go out to the vote and what is the total value of all property in the city, and then the second vote would be to say, yes, we want to be on the ballot for whatever millage that we originally went to that. So some of the timelines that George shared with us, one would be a, Resolution One would be at our June thirteenth meeting, and Resolution Two would be at our June twenty-seventh or July eleventh meeting. And then if we cut it close and/or procrastinated our decisions, we would be able to potentially have Resolution One at our July eleventh meeting, and then Resolution Two at our August first meeting, which would then allow us to still meet the Board of Elections deadline of August seventh. But I don't anticipate us having any difficulty doing the work we need to do ahead of time. What I do want to share with the community is that one of the criticisms that we received was that the Strongsville GOP wanted to speak to the board and felt that we did not, we would not engage with them. And so from the, from the board's perspective, and it's timely that George went to Dave Yost's Sunshine Law Meeting to make sure we're all legal, I don't think it's understood that the board can't meet with people outside of a board meeting. Our board meetings are open to the public, they are public board meetings, but the flip side of that is, is the board cannot have private conversations about school board business, about school district business. That breaks the sunshine rules, and we, anything we would choose or anything that we would decide at those meetings would be improper and illegal. So I do want to share that with the community, that there was no, there was no action by the board not to have that communication. Ultimately, for the board to have the kind of communication with anyone in the community, any group in the community, it has to be done at a board meeting. And in fact, there has been cases, there have been court cases, that if a group attempts to meet with board members individually in a round-robin fashion to try to get out of the sunshine laws, that is also illegal. So we couldn't have individual conversations with Strongsville GOP or anyone else in a round-robin fashion to try to trick our way out of sunshine laws. And ultimately, I think we all agree that the sunshine laws have merit. The public has the right and needs to be aware of our decision-making process, and so having these things in a public meeting is valid, and I think all of us support that. But one of the things I'd like to try to do as a board is to address that request, to have meetings, to listen, to explain our position, the school district's position, and we'll do it at a board meeting. So with, with the rest of my board members' approval, I will make that invitation, and we'll schedule some time, and we will have those conversations, because ultimately, we have to have those conversations so that the board can make an intelligent decision on what to do next.
Are we allowed to do that? I mean, there's so many laws. If they came, like, not Cameron or Johnny or George can't answer those questions because they're the administration, am I right about that? Or if they come to a board meeting?
They can come to a board meeting, and we can have whoever we want to participate in a board meeting. George would make sure we follow the rules, but the rule is, is we can't advocate during a board meeting, yes or no.
Right.
But, but what this would be is us, and what I'm suggesting is a meeting of the Finance Committee, that we would make a meeting of the whole, so that all board members could attend, and we can discuss millage amounts, right, you know, reasons for millage amounts, consequences of what-if scenarios. So if we would, if we would consider reducing the levy, what would be the consequences of that? Those kinds of conversations we can have.
Okay.
George, do you have any other comments on?
No, I think you touched on it, and also to add, at that point, the board wouldn't have approved the resolution to be on the ballot yet either, so we're not campaigning, it's just more providing.
So it's more question and answer?
Correct.
The actual?
And since there is nothing, during these meetings, we would not have made a decision on whether to go back on the ballot.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So it wouldn't look like we were trying to persuade anyone. Okay, okay.
So, but again, you know, one of the, one of the comments was to be reasonable, and some of us who have been around here for a long time have heard me talk about, I have a three-part test. Is it needed? Is it reasonable? And can we look our neighbors and our taxpayers in the eye and promise them we won't waste their money? So having any tax amount be reasonable resonates. I think ultimately, the decision or the discussion we need to have is, what is truly reasonable and what is wise, and what is going to put the school district in a position to continue to grow versus what is going to put the school district in a position to maintain and fall behind? But that's where I think we're at. We'll review that data once the full data comes out. I can, those of us will run the numbers and look at all the data, and then we'll have a healthy conversation, hopefully in a little different way, so that we can prepare for whatever our next steps are.
Does anybody else have any? Thank you for your attention, and next on our agenda is meeting notification, if and when the computer catches up. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, April eleventh, in this building at seven P.M. A regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, April twenty-fifth, at seven P.M. in this room. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee and preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? George, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howesam?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:35. We have no anticipation of further business. I will, we are on break and there's a lot of celebrations in the springtime. So if this applies, please accept our, our Happy Ramadan from March 11th through April 9th, a belated Happy Holy on March 25th, a Happy Easter on March 31st. And if I mess this up, someone's going to teach me how to pronounce it correctly, a Happy Id Al Fatur on April 9th. And then we have a couple of board meetings and then we'll have a Happy Passover on April 22nd. Thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.